With our last agency, the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, Director Mavronis is going to lead with her presentation. It is late, I'm sorry. She's going to lead with her presentation at this time.
Good evening. Thank you very much Chairwoman McCray, honorable members of the Baltimore City Council, and all who are joining us today in person and virtually. I'm Stephanie Mavronis. I serve as the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, MONC. I'm also joined by members of MONC's leadership team here in the council chambers tonight. I'll recognize a few folks. Chief of Staff Chanel White, Community Violence Intervention Chief Arnetta Shelton, Group Violence Reduction Strategy Chief Terrence Nash, Victim Services Chief Mark Mason, Community Engagement and Opportunity Chief Mylina Beach Johnson, Data Analytics Chief Joseph Mulhausen, and Finance Chief Tynie Gilly. Thank you for the opportunity to present MONC's fiscal '26 budget. It's the presentation. Thank you. When Mayor Scott created MONC in December 2020, replacing and rescoping what was the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, this was essentially new work for Baltimore, developing a comprehensive public safety strategy that went beyond the role of law enforcement and implementing a public health approach to reducing violence. MONC's fiscal '26 budget, broken into these four budget services, makes significant strides to institutionalize this agency's work through the transition to the General Fund of core positions that were previously funded by ARPA. Next slide, please. Thank you. From where we started to today, MONC has built a strong foundation for the work and implemented promising interventions that are actively contributing to dramatic reductions in homicides and non-fatal shootings in Baltimore alongside the work that the men and women of BPD do each day. Year over year, homicides are down 23%, non-fatal shootings are down 25.3% on top of the drops that we saw in 2023 and 2024 respectively. In taking stock of how we arrived at this point today, I need to thank every member of my team at MONC for their commitment and willingness to show up and close the gaps to truly deliver that holistic, evidence-based, public safety vision. I also need to thank some very important people across Baltimore. The organizations and people on the ground and the grassroots who do this work each and every day, often without fanfare, but truly out of a true commitment and love for Baltimore, who aren't often lifted up in the discussions that we're having about who's responsible for these public safety reductions. But I need to say that your work is seen and deeply appreciated, and we would not be having this conversation as a city without you. The Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan is a five-year plan. With fiscal '26, we're entering the fifth and final year of the work outlined within it. This coming year, MONC will also take up the work of developing the next five-year Comprehensive Public Safety Plan in strong collaboration with this administration, our fellow agencies, and the Baltimore community. I look forward to engaging the city council in this process as we enter the new year. Our fiscal '26 goals include expanding the Group Violence Reduction Strategy to the entire city, launching sidestep youth diversion citywide for first-time offenders of less serious crimes, scaling other community-focused initiatives like neighborhood policing plans in partnership with BPD, increasing coordination with internal and external partners, and the continued work of evaluating our programs to understand the impact and return on investment of this work. I'll walk through our budget services now. We can go to the next slide. Starting with Service 617, Criminal Justice Coordination. This is the service that houses MONC's victim services work, including costs associated with the operation and staffing of the Baltimore City Visitation Center and our anti-human trafficking grants to community-based providers and outreach organizations. In 2022, we established the Victim Services Lane at MONC with the goal of closing the gaps for survivors of shootings and other forms of traumatization. Then, in 2023, MONC Victim Services began providing direct services, including in-house case management and referral services. Since then, we've continued to grow out this team and fine-tune inter-agency victim service collaboration and case management protocol with the victim service units at BPD and the State's Attorney's Office. In fiscal '25, year-to-date, MONC Victim Services has served 316 victims. Additionally, this service reflects a funding increase of $105,000 to cover the cost of security staffing that's provided by BPD for the Baltimore City Visitation Center. The Visitation Center falls within our victim services portfolio at MONC. This space is a safe location that promotes healthy interactions during the exchange of children between parents or during onsite visitation. And the Visitation Center also serves as an access point for referring families to additional supportive services that may help facilitate a path to healing. This service also previously included the Mayor's Local Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, which operated between 2021 and 2024. And as some of you may know, thanks to Mayor Scott and the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy, there's a new CJCC, which we've convened at the state level, which has replaced our local body while carrying forward much of the work that we started. This body had its first meeting last month. Next slide. Service 618, Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. This service contains the work at MONC associated with the Mayor's Dual Gun Violence Prevention Strategies, the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, or GBRS, and Community Violence Intervention, or CVI. The service includes the city's annual investment in ROKA, Safe Streets, and funds supporting the School-Based Violence Intervention Pilot. We're moving full seam ahead with GBRS and expect to be expanded to the Southern District by the end of this month. The strategy relies on strong tri-party partnership between the Mayor, Police Commissioner, and the State's Attorney. After the Southern District, we are working towards scaling GBRS citywide by the end of the calendar year with BPD and the State's Attorney's Office. We're continuing to see strong outcomes associated with this strategy, reflected both in the homicide and non-fatal shooting data and GBRS participant outcomes. We know this because we closely track GBRS data, which directly informs our management and which partners review on a weekly basis. Since we launched GBRS in January 2022, we've been able to enroll 230 people at the highest risk of gun violence into intensive life coaching services with Youth Advocate Programs, or YAP, and ROKA. Our cumulative recidivism rate for those participants is 2.6%. Our cumulative revictimization rate is 5.8%. And so these are numbers cumulative from 2022. These numbers, particularly given that we are talking about the people at the highest risk of gun violence, hence why they were referred to GBRS in the first place, are one metric that shows us that we're not only saving lives, but transforming them in the process. In districts where GBRS is active, fiscal year '25, year-over-year, we're seeing a 24% cumulative decrease in homicides and non-fatal shootings in districts where GBRS is active. On the Community Violence Intervention front, this fiscal year, we launched the School-Based Violence Intervention Pilot at Carver, Digital Harbor, Edmondson Westside, and Murvoe. We celebrated 365-plus days of no homicides at five of Baltimore's 10 Safe Streets sites, and we're deepening collaboration between our hospital partners, our Community Violence Intervention ecosystem, our victim services partners, and the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. I do want to briefly address one metric you see here on the slide, number of CVI mediations. You'll notice a lower goal for fiscal '26 and fluctuation of this number over time. In the past, this metric exclusively relied on Safe Streets mediation data. We changed it and updated it to the number of CVI mediations to reflect mediation work that other Community Violence Intervention partners were doing. And in fiscal '23 and '24, this number included mediations from organizations we awarded ARPA funds to. With the ending of these contracts and the ending of ARPA funding over time, those numbers are no longer reflected in the total. But what the council can expect to see in fiscal '25 in this number are mediations from Safe Streets and the School-Based Violence Intervention Pilot. So far, year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, School-Based Violence Intervention Pilot, we've had 186 conflict mediations documented. And so far, fiscal year-to-date for Safe Streets, 1,141 conflict mediations that Safe Streets has documented. Next slide, please. Service 619, Community Empowerment and Opportunity. This service contains MONC's initiatives related to reentry services, coordinated neighborhood stabilization response, youth diversion, and neighborhood policing plans. This is also the portfolio that contains the Peace Mobile. We've made a reduction of $195,000 in partnership with BBMR to align the budget with current spending trends. But I will note that with this reduction, we still have the funds to support our plans to scale our pre-arrest youth diversion work for first-time offenders citywide. As far as our work this year, we have deployed and coordinated resources through 16 distinct activations. And these neighborhood stabilizations are one of the key places where the agency has direct engagement with residents that result in a referral to MONC. These referrals may be for any number of things, including victim services, trauma supports, referral support, or reentry services. We also play a role as a trainer with community partners and also inter-agency partners from anti-human trafficking training to intimate partner violence prevention training to training on data tracking methods and tools, hence why we track this metric. These trainings reach the general public and our partners. Last but not least, Service 619 houses the work associated with the Office of Returning Citizens. And while the mandate for that office did not come with dedicated funding, we're working to proactively identify external funding sources. We've already submitted a grant application this spring for funding that would support growth in this office, growing from what is now one reentry coordinator and a chief to add an additional coordinator if awarded. That grant would also come with funds that would directly benefit returning citizens who are in need of housing support, continuing work that we were able to start this year in fiscal '25. But this work to continue, we'll be working closely with the Mayor's Office to formalize the Reentry Action Council and appoint the designated members. And we continue to support people preparing to return home to Baltimore after serving their time through Safe Return Planning, as well as returning citizens and supporting them at any stage of their journey, post-release with wraparound services and referral supports. Next slide. Finally, MONC's administrative service is Service 758. On the major operating budget highlights, just flagging that the Peace Mobile driver, it is not a new position. As you can see, it was a mid-year creation that's now reflected here in the fiscal '26 budget. Next slide, please. Just a few words here before I turn it over to the questions from the committee. Since July 2021, when we released the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, we've taken an intentional building approach. Year one was the foundational year. Year two was the framing year. Year three was our securing year. Now in year four, we're in our finishing year. Increasingly, Baltimoreans understand that truly building public safety takes not only all of us, but it takes dedicated focus over years towards the same goal. It takes interventions that stop the next shooting from occurring tomorrow and interventions that start with our young people and families that get at the root of the problem and pay dividends into the future. There's now a consensus in our city that it takes all levels of government, partnerships with law enforcement, and strong coordination with the grassroots, with partners each working in their lanes to do their part in making a safer Baltimore. We're no longer having a conversation that's solely focused on what police are going to do to make our city safer. As we enter year five, the final year of the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, our maintenance year, we're finishing the build of our core functions and programs. We've activated internal coordination protocols that we're working to expand to our community-based partners. Our focus is on sustaining the gains that we're seeing as a city and ensuring that we can continue this work long-term for Baltimore. Even with this progress, my team and I are humbled by the challenges ahead, and we are motivated to continue delivering for our great city. I want to say that any life lost to violence in Baltimore is one too many. Every Baltimorean deserves to feel safe in their neighborhoods and as they move their way across the city. And so undoubtedly, we have more work to do. We're proud of the progress. We're proud of what we've been able to build in this agency over the past four years. And we look forward to answering your questions and opening up the discussion about this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Director, for your presentation. Back in 2021, Baltimore City had a historic the most women died by homicide at that time. And the numbers were trending to go up, so we had a hearing. And MONC was involved, and you guys put forward a ton of a ton of ideas, a ton of plans regarding intimate partner violence. And especially when you do a ton of stuff. You started working through it. You hired Ms. Lee. And I apologize, it's late, so I'm gonna try to get through this. What I'm looking for is just an update on intimate partner violence numbers. A lot of other numbers have went down in this city. And I just want to an update on those if you have them available, and if not, I can definitely put them in as a committee request.
I'll let Deputy Chief Lee respond to that, and then if there's additional information you'd like, we can absolutely follow up with that.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for the question, and good evening, everyone. So year-to-date, so we're talking January 1, 2025, until yesterday. So year-to-date, comparing 2025 to 2024, intimate partner violence or domestic violence crimes against person, not including our common assaults, so we're talking about our violent crimes. So we're talking 2024 compared to 2025, we've gone down 18.79%. For DV crimes against property, we've decreased by 3.6%. So January to May 2025 compared to 2024. Last year, just to give you a comparison of comparing 2023 to 2024, crimes against person, so those are our violent crimes, we went down 10.67%. So we're already trending with a more significant decrease this year compared to last year when comparing last year to the previous year. Common assaults. Common assaults is where you're going to see most of our deviate crimes. That's our second-degree assaults. This year, from January to May of 2025 compared to the same time in 2024, our common assaults have decreased by 12.15%. Last year, when comparing to the previous year, our common assaults went down 7.69%. So we are continuing to trend down as we're seeing violent crime, as well as crimes in the common assault area, which is not violent. We're still seeing those trends impact intimate partner violence as well in terms of a reduction.
That's all I need, Deputy Chief Lee. It's great to see you. And I value and I thank you for your work and all the MONC team that's working in this area. While violent crime is going down, and we're happy. From homicides to shootings, it's just very important to me that this is also reflected in that space as well. In violence against women and intimate partner violence, which is not just women, that they're trending down. Are there any strategies right now to make sure that while these other numbers are going down, that we're also putting funding, resources, brain power, everything into this area as well?
I'll start, and then Deputy Chief, please follow up if there's additional things you want to add. What I'll say is that it's part of the reason why we have a dedicated focus on intimate partner violence prevention within our team. Also, strong partnerships with many organizations that do work on the front lines in this area. It's also why we added additional staffing to our team that focus on intimate partner violence prevention. So for us, we want to make sure we're there to serve any survivors of this violence. But what we want to do more is prevent and intervene. And so looking at ways that we've been able to create grant awards for organizations that are doing abuser intervention work. So not just putting that full burden on our survivors to get their needs met, but how can we intervene with people who we know have been abusers so that we can make sure that that violence stops there and is not escalating to a point where we're unfortunately seeing someone lose their life at the hands of a partner. And so we have to take that seriously. I know also within our team, the Deputy Chief is one of the people that sits around the table as this year in 2025, we've activated internal coordination amongst our team. And so as we're reviewing the cases that happen every single week, our homicides and non-fatal shootings, we pay very close attention to the ones that involve women as victims. We pay very close attention to the details we may have that indicate this was an incident of domestic violence, and we follow up, both with our partners at the Baltimore Police Department, but with other organizations who can play a role too. And so you have my commitment that this will be a continued focus for us. And I know there are many more strategies and interventions that I'm sure the Deputy Chief could speak to. Did you want to add anything?
Just any highlights. I don't want to keep you all night, but any, just like some wins, some wins.
Yes, thank you for asking. I appreciate your focus on it. And what our focus with intimate partner violence is really about integration into the work. It's not a standalone strategy. It is integrated into this Community Violence Prevention Plan. But as I speak to the specialty of intimate partner violence, I would say that we're creating more of a boots-on-the-ground approach, right? Our team is small, so making sure that those at our HFIT institutions that don't have a dedicated DV response team, helping them strengthen their DV response team. As we're out in community and visiting with our after-school programs, our colleges and universities, our Safe Streets workers, that they understand how to recognize, respond, and refer intimate partner violence. So creating more champions around it, but making sure that it's not just prevention. Councilwoman, that we do need the prevention, but we also need the intervention. That's a big piece of it. And so making sure our agencies like the House of Ruth and Turnaround, that we're all sitting around the table, understanding how to work collaboratively. And I just want to close on this because Director Mavronis mentioned it, but building out BPD's Victim Services Team with a dedicated focus on intimate partner violence is another layer of victim services that's there to coordinate with those that are already in the ecosystem.
I think about like when we know that there are, we talk about sidestepping some other programs and Commissioner Woolley saying, hey, there's a number of our youth that we know are constantly reoffending. And they need different services. And I just want to make sure we, obviously, we're going to support survivors. We're going to do our best to wrap everything that we have around them, but making sure, just like you said, prevention, intervention for folks that are causing the harm. What I'll do is just make sure that I speak with you all outside of here, not a committee request, but I'll just make sure that I speak with you all about like alerts and what that looks like for folks who are causing harm. And what it looks like for them to get the support that they need so they can stop. Because I'm pretty sure that just like we know adults who are constantly reoffending, our youth, unfortunately, who are constantly reoffending, is the same within that. And of course, I'm going to stop right now, but again, just thank you for the work that you're doing. And I'm going to go to Councilman McCray.
Thank you, Chair. I want to keep this brief. I don't have any questions. I don't think. Thank God. But I just want to give you all your flowers for being instrumental in changing the trajectory for many people in Baltimore City. What you guys have done is a blueprint. You showed the country. When you take a community approach to violence, a holistic approach to violence, it really not only changes the data, but it changes lives. And we've been battling crime for as long as I can remember, the wrong way, for so long. Knockers, for those who live in Baltimore, they know who they are, and the great Cavaliers, right? Not being able to sit outside your house if your house was near a corner because you were loitering. The disrespect, the mistrust, throwing people in jail instead of giving them options. That was what tough on crime was, and we saw year after year after year, it never worked. And I just want to thank you. I want to thank the first director, Shante Jackson, who took so many stones and so many swords from it's, we're at the end, from the media that's here right now, from this body, from so many people who said this would not work, to our mayor, this would not work, to you, this would not work. And now they're all eating crow because this is working. And this will continue to work because you guys have been intentional. And one of the things that I wanted to do during this process was to make sure that all our agencies were being intentional when it came to servicing the people of Baltimore. You have to be intentional. You have to care. If you don't, it shows. And there's certain agencies that it shows. You're not one of them. You guys continuously show up. There have been times where I've had questions of you, and you guys answered those questions. You guys were willing to provide feedback. When Deontay was, his life was tragically lost at the shopping center, you guys were there. Rick was there. Rick was there in the shopping center more than I was there in the shopping center. The Peace Mobile was there. And then you guys are now at Emerson Westside because you care and you want to be intentional. And so I just can't thank you enough for this. This city is thankful. And I just want you all to know how important the role that you're playing in this comeback story. And we can thank the police, we can thank the State's Attorney's Office, we can thank whoever. But I know as someone who grew up in Baltimore, as a young kid, the people that you listen to are the folks that you see each and every day. I cannot walk up to anybody on the corner and say, like this, and say, hey, you need to change your life. But you guys but you guys have the messengers, the correct messengers, that can go on those corners and save those lives, and that's for men and women. And so I just want you to continue to do what you do. Continue to pull positivity into Baltimore, into young men and women. And no matter what the media says, no matter what the naysayers say, there's a saying, men lie, women lie, numbers don't lie. And your numbers speak for itself, so I just want to say thank you.
Okay, Jay-Z. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have questions, but I do want to echo my colleague. All of your team is amazing, has definitely been there. We've been to several crises in my district. Have you figured out how to clone Rick? Have you figured it out yet? Because I don't know how he can be everywhere. I don't know how all of you can be everywhere, but you are. And so I'm really grateful, really grateful. I have a couple of questions. One was about, you had mentioned a little bit about your ARPA-funded positions. And obviously, this is a very big priority for all of us. So I'm hoping that all of them would be, that you're going to continue to have them absorbed into the General Fund. Are they all absorbed into the General Fund this year?
Correct. All of the ARPA-funded positions in the agency will move to the General Fund at the start of fiscal '26, based off the proposed budget.
So it's not like there's any money left. They used it all, basically, as of July 1.
Yeah, so I think it was yesterday. Yeah, so I think it was yesterday, it was this morning when we were talking about ARPA positions in the Health Department. And I had mentioned a little bit that not all agencies are the same in terms of
Their timing.
The timing of when their ARPA dollars runs out, run out. MONZI is an example where based off of how they had allocated the funds for their projects, the funding for their staff costs was going to run out at the end of fiscal '25, which is why you saw the recommendation to shift those costs to the general fund starting in fiscal '26.
And councilwomen, just to add on to what the budget director said, as far as non-personnel ARPA funds, our agreement with the Recovery Office will continue through fiscal year '26. We don't have much money left, but it will be really important bridge funding for us for certain key initiatives. And so we're actively working with the Recovery Office right now to figure out how we program them. But it comes back to, we couldn't do this without the partnership and commitment of the mayor, this entire administration. We've been really intentional over the past couple fiscal years about how we can start to get some of our key positions in the general fund. Like last year, you saw the two GVRs positions come over. We saw additional GVRs positions come over early as a mayoral enhancement later in the process. And so slowly but surely, whether we were able to take positions and move them directly into the general fund, or in some cases identify alternate funding sources through grants, other things like that, I'm very proud that we've been able to sustain our staffing because we are essentially an agency that was able to use ARPA funding to create a whole new agency that didn't necessarily exist before. And so it took a lot. I think we couldn't have done it without that initial investment, but I really appreciate the kind words and think that our whole goal with the ARPA funds was let's prove our concept. Let's show that this works and let's show that this kind of work is a good investment for Baltimore. And that's what I think we've been able to do and we certainly have set a high bar for the work we need to continue doing from here on out.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, I don't think anybody's going to complain about moving those positions and making sure the people that have been so effective are still able to be with us to continue that work. As my colleague said, you know, we've, Baltimore has proven that you can't lower homicides just through the police alone. It's just not possible. You have to really get to the root of what's happening and all of you do that and you're so dedicated to it. I was also curious about the, the neighborhood stabilization work and I don't know what service that's in. And the reason I say that is because one of the things that I'm curious about is, oh, here we are, it's under neighborhood safety. Is it 618 is where the neighborhood?
619 would be.
619 is where your, your folks are, okay. Because we, we still do have, you know, crises in our, in our districts, right? I just, I had a mass shooting one week and then I had another, you know, three shootings in different parts of one neighborhood. And it's very difficult for your team to be able to do 45 day stabilization in five different places at the same time. And, and yet that is so important, right? Because the stabilization, as I learned, is so very tailored to what's really going on in the community. So what is there, I mean, hopefully everything will be stabilized at some point. We won't have these crises, but you know, just like we have fires, we're going to likely have some, some of those things happen. Are you looking at planning on a growth strategy in terms of being able to serve all of the needs and it's not just, you know, when there's a mass shooting, but actually be part of the strategy we've been talking about relative to, you know, the corner, you know, opener drug markets on the corners, which some are violent, some are not. But at the same time, we want to make sure that those young people are actually getting a different opportunity and not doing that. So I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, again, you, like you said, you have proved your concepts. You've proved that it works and there's going to be higher demand until we really get to a point where we know that we're stable as a city in terms of this, you know, because what happened on Greenmount and Venable was really horrific and horrible in so many different ways. But you were there with us and I appreciate it. Right away that day, we were all there and also continues to be there as well. And that's just taking a lot of your resources to give me, my neighborhoods a lot of attention, but then you've got to do the same thing across the city. So what is that strategy moving forward? I know we're moving ARPA positions, you're getting, but I would imagine that you're starting to, we've, we've got to do more, I would imagine.
Yes, thank you for that question. So I mentioned in the presentation that we've had 16 distinct activations this year. One of the things that we've started to do this year was also engage in responses that were in different lengths. So the 45 days that we initially came out with, we've seen cases now, Brooklyn Homes is probably the most notable example where we were essentially there for a full year and still are deeply engaged in the work of the community. What is happening in the community necessitates how long we stay or not. But we do know there are some responses, like some of our school-based responses, may only require sort of three to five days of really intentional engagement with our school system and what's happening in the school. It may not require a full 45 day stabilization. So we're trying to be even more tailored in the treatment, so to speak, and how we do that. The other thing I'll mention, Rick is amazing. He does great work and we are trying to clone him. But in addition to that, just trying to grow more people who understand the way that he does his work, the way that we believe in our theory of change, that you need to be really intentional and targeted and develop strategies that speak directly to the problem that we're trying to solve and the specific dynamics of the community. But we've added an additional position, which we've hired for and is on the team, our community stabilization coordinator. So that's a position in addition to Rick's position that's really responsible for the coordination of those activities. We cannot be everywhere, but we are going to be leveraging additional community-based partners to expand our reach and just have more full consecutive day coverage in our zones where we're having stabilizations. And I think the other thing, I lost my train of thought a little bit.
But I think in terms of a follow, a quick follow-up, you know, the other piece of that is not just the presence, but it's being consistent, right? Because you build trust by being consistent, which is hard if you have to be in 16 places. I try actually, and it's very difficult. But also just making sure that those opportunities are there. If somebody is ready to get out of that life, you have to be ready. And so is this new position going to be making those partnerships so that there's automatically a job available that they might be interested in, that there's housing available? You know, what are those, those types of connections? Is that what the person's going to be doing?
Absolutely. So they've already started and they've, they came from another city agency where they did outreach based work. They have a lot of great relationships and connections. In fact, I was with this person who was supporting us in our summer youth engagement efforts and we came across someone who then in there, I think they were experiencing homelessness. They also were expressing that they needed treatment, that they could benefit immediately from treatment and they were ready to go right then. We pick up the phone in the moment. He picked up the phone in the moment and got an organization to come out right then and pick him up because he was ready to go and we were there to, to see that happen. So we're consistently dealing with issues, big and small, that may come up. And what I'll say too, I remember my thought from earlier, in terms of how we show up and where, we're doing much more proactive engagement work now, based on what we see in the crime statistics, based on what we see in, in the different dynamics. I mentioned the internal coordination that we're doing so far since we started this in 2025, we've collectively, and this is an internal MONZI team, many of the people you see here in the room right now, we're, like I said, reviewing every single homicide, non-fatal shooting and the dynamics around it. And those sometimes point us in the direction of activating a stabilization. If we're seeing a number of incidents pop up around the same location, if we're seeing incidents pop up around schools or places where there just may be a need for that deeper level of engagement, those are the kind of conversations that my team and I are having and we're thinking about who are those community partners we can leverage? What would be a successful outcome and how can we make sure over the course of this stabilization, be it 45 days, seven days, you know, two weeks, whatever's appropriate in that situation, that we're hitting the mark and we're doing that work in partnership with the community?
I think the proactive piece is really important. I think we have a very important case with Greenmount and Venable where the incident happened, the thing, the horrible thing happened, then there's all kinds of feeling in the neighborhood that it's going to happen again. And so there has to be that engagement to try to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
I'll give you one good example. So we noticed an address popping up over and over again that we just were like, this is weird, we're seeing the same address. Looking into it a little deeper, doing some research, we found out it was an Airbnb property where people were going and having parties that were unfortunately ending up violent. As we looked into it deeper, I think there was some issues with maybe the licensing or registration of that property, but we were able to quickly identify that, work with DHCD and our other partners to get that property shut down. And so just all of us being in the room and being able to look at these problems from our different angles and leveraging our different relationships and experience, it's been huge because I think up to this point, we've been doing really great work in our respective areas. It's been a huge goal of mine to bring together the expertise, like we need to have GVRs in the room, talking with the folks who oversee our CBI work. We need to have people who are dealing with our returning citizen population in the room talking together. And so we're going to continue to do this work and like I shared earlier, it is our goal to expand the way that we're doing this internal coordination to involve our community-based partners too. Because that's how we truly are connecting and growing and building this ecosystem and covering more ground in the city than we've traditionally been able to.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think y'all are my favorite mayor's office. So I was running it through my head and I was thinking about saying like saving the best for last and I think I actually think that, so. I think that when, when I think about, like what my colleague from the eighth said earlier, this idea, the mayor's line about making our neighborhood safer the right way, the, like y'all are like the face of that for me and everything that y'all do and everything you enable, everything you support. And, and so I think that a ton of folks doing really great, important work in the city, obviously, but, but I think that, yeah, I, I really, really admire what y'all, what y'all do and for the amount of money that it costs is, is, it goes a long way and it's just the right way to be doing this. Two things I want to talk about, we had, one, as you can probably guess, school-based violence intervention program. And we had, I'd like to hear both plans for next SY, if, if there's any change there, providers or size or whatever, as well as if you've been able to assess so far the impact, the effectiveness and how, what you've found so far.
Sure, thank you for that. So it is a two-year pilot. We started this school year '24, '25, and it will continue through the '25, '26 school year. And we are in the process of an evaluation of that work. We're working with the Baltimore City Health Department that's working to stand up some initiatives in middle schools, which we think will be very complimentary, and then looking to, to be able to evaluate that whole ecosystem of these types of prevention work, intervention work within our schools. We are expecting the same providers to stay on for year two and we're working right now to get through the contracting process there. So just making sure on our end, those administrative pieces are being taken care of. But I would love to give Chief Shelton and Chief White a chance to speak to anything they can share, just about the qualitative outcomes that we've seen and what that work has looked like so far.
So the program works. The kids love it, the communities love it. It has been extremely impactful in the city with all the schools that we're implemented in, which are Emerson, Digital, Carver, and Mervo. Since we've set up establishment, they've been able to address with 186 mediations, 172 interventions, lunch bunches. But I think the consistent, the, the thing we are is intentional and we're consistent, not just with the staff who are in the schools, but our team. And I'll let Chief Shelton follow up. Our team is there. We are constantly doing visits to each school, making sure the CBOs are present, collecting data, asking questions. We're also engaging with the youth ourselves. So if there's ever an instance where we need to and we have intervened to offer more resources outside of the school to students who may need additional assistance with, or their families with housing, with other resources.
So just to clarify, you're saying that MONZI will sometimes intervene directly, like not just the, the provider organization, but, okay.
So part of our monitoring of the CBO is to oversee them, do check-ins, monitoring, just to see how it's going, checking with the principals. So just as much as they know the CBO staff, they know our staff as well. We are there if they need us to come in for instances that may have been outside of school, but will direct back into the school. We're notified so we can be responsive and in support to ensure that it doesn't escalate to anything, anything more than the incident that occurred. We notify the family members and we bring in other partners as needed to offer that support. But I'll let Chief Shelton respond a little more.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to speak a little bit in regards to the impact, what we're seeing, what we're hearing, feedback. School staff, the principals, leadership are finding that they can refocus their efforts in on academics and curricular development. The CBOs are handling the conflicts. They are embedded in the culture of the schools. And I just wanted to read one or two of the quotes from the principals. So Principal, Principal Jackson, down at Digital mentioned suspensions have been reduced by 50% compared to last school year. Direct result of the movement team's proactive involvement by intervening early, the movement team has facilitated more restorative conversations, the mediations and preventative discussions whenever students sense potential conflict. We're also seeing growth of the number of students reaching out to the movement team. They're being proactive and asking for guidance before issues escalate. And just going over to Principal, Principal Rivers at Carver, as the principal has truly been a blessing to work with the school-based violence intervention team, their support has allowed me to focus more on the instructional components of, with the students, knowing that I have a strong, reliable partner addressing important community concerns and climate issues. So we, the data speaks, is speaking for itself. We're of course in the pilot phases, but we're also getting that feedback and testimonial as we go around and conduct these site visits.
I appreciate that. And, and I feel like, I mean, just at Digital, I was there getting a haircut this morning and they have a barber shop now. And it's just, it is really striking how different it feels walking around inside the school during the school day than it did like a year ago or a little over a year ago. So I mean, that's, the qualitatively it's there. What I, what I would really like to see though is, is like a quantitative assessment. And I, I have some thoughts on what that could be. I'm sure y'all have some thoughts on what that could be, right? And how that could be pulled? Y'all have a data person. But I, I think that that's just a really important part of the, the story and being able to understand this, you know, comprehensively is both things in the school as well as in the probably like immediate surrounding neighborhood, I think would be, there's probably multiple things that could be pulled in there. Would really love to see that. I think that would be really helpful. And then the other thing I want to talk about, also youth related, DJS. So I've had a lot of chances recently to talk to a lot of people about DJS and having some good conversations coming up with them as well. For the director specifically, how, you've been in the role for a year and a half now?
About two years.
Two years, okay. How has, from your vantage point, how has, and I know, you know, MONZI has some relationships with DJS, but, but how has your interaction with them as well as your perspective on, on their operations, like what have you seen over the last two years?
Thank you for the question. Over the last two years, I think we've experienced a lot of partnership with DJS. I know DJS has been willing to pour into some of our initiatives. They supported us being able to offer additional youth services over the summer, last summer, through an interagency agreement, which we really appreciate. We've also been partnering directly with DJS on relocation services. And so Chief Mason from our victim services team and his team work really closely with DJS on a regular basis to both talk about some of the cases where relocation is needed for safety reasons and beyond. So.
Sorry, this is relocation of a, of who?
Chief, you want to speak a little bit to what your relationship with DJS is on the relocation piece? relocation piece?
Yes, yes. Good evening. Mark Mason, Chief of Victim Services. We have situations and circumstances where DJS actually sends over referrals for young people that have family members that have been victimized, that actually need, you know, possible relocation. And it actually, it helps twofold. Not only does it allow us to get families to safe environments and communities, but it also, the bi-weekly case management of interacting with the families and ensuring that DJS does better case management in alignment with the young person that was involved. When we're moving them from one community where they were victimized out to another community, it allows them to kind of disengage from the violence that they've been encountering. So it kind of helps.
Okay. No, I understand what we're talking about now. I just wasn't clear on the term. Yeah. So going back to DJS over the last two years.
I think from my perspective, and you know, we have a unique perspective on this, just given the type of agency we are, I know there may be different perspectives in the law enforcement community.
This is absolutely why I'm asking for yours. Yeah, I totally understand.
Yeah, so I've definitely seen a willingness to partner, a strong interest in the types of services that we can provide, and also a strong interest in making sure that we can have greater collaborative work together so that fewer young people are ending up there in the first place. But when they do, we want to make sure we can support. And I think with some of the work that the chief mentioned, this is something that we're able to do fairly well. We've cultivated strong relationships with landlords. We have a lot of experience under our belt now between GVRS, between some of our other victim services relocation work to partner directly in that way. And we're seeing the direct results and benefit of that. I think if anything, I would be interested in ways that we can continue to play a role on that more preventative, preventative side so that we're seeing fewer young people end up in the system. Or if there are young people that DJS is not, for whatever reason, is not going to charge or take further in that process, that we could potentially play a role there to make sure that we're not seeing just either what feels like a revolving door or a young person who is greatly in need of servicing may get turned away by DJS and sent back to their neighborhood without that support. I feel like there is a role for an agency like ours to play with those cases.
I'm glad you brought that up and very tactful way to, I think, word that. I have a couple of meetings with DJS coming up and I will, I think that's spot on, that when we don't provide the wraparound services, but we allow the young person to go home, that's when the, that's when the bad things happen. And, and we, it makes, it undermines all the good work that DJS is doing when these types of, when you fail in that spot. And so I think that's critically important, and I think that Monsi is probably the logical organization to be involved in that. And so I look forward to continuing, hearing more about that and discussing that with y'all further. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Council President Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Mavronis, the whole team. It's good to see you all. Another council member gave you a lot of props, so I'm not going to do all that. But what I will say is that Baltimore is winning the violent crime fight. It is crystal clear that we are a much, much safer city than we were a few years ago, and we still have a long way to go. And I credit BPD, State's Attorney, the governor, the mayor, the council, your agency, our communities for stepping up. It is a team effort. It's everybody. And so I always want to say that whenever we got any of our public safety agencies in front of us that keep doing the good work because it is making a difference and is making an impact. I want to ask specifically about, we've heard from some of the partner organizations that are having some challenges, given the federal climate, particularly a few of the partners that support either Safe Streets or Peace Team or any of the interrupters. What is the, to your knowledge, what is the fiscal impact of cuts to those organizations currently?
I would have to get back to you on the exact number. I may be able to pull it up here. But we have done some work to map out the exact impact of that. I know I've been in conversation with the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy to do some of that mapping and also to think strategically with our state partners. We know that, given the amount of federal dollars that was cut, it's going to be hard for the city or state or even philanthropy to replace that on a like one-to-one basis. But with that being said, we know that this has impacts on our partners, from ROKA to Living Classrooms to LifeBridge Health, to the Peace Team, Black Mental Health Alliance and others. There is an impact there. And we know that in that impact, it means that there have been staff that have had to have been let go at some of these organizations. It means that we have fewer people who are going to be on the ground doing some of that work. Some of the work that was cut from the Peace Team was on-the-ground work in community that was making a difference in outreach and engaging people at the highest risk. So what we're trying to do from our part is stay closely connected to them, to support where we can, and to continue to work with our partners to figure out how to get the funds that we need. I did want to make sure I clarify, though, for Safe Streets specifically, while LifeBridge Health was impacted on a separate project, there were no impacts from the federal cuts to Safe Streets as a program. Safe Streets is funded and is appropriated annually as an earmark in the state budget and in the city budget via our budget. We supplement it currently with some ARPA dollars. But just to be clear, I think the project that was cut that related to one of our Safe Streets administrators was separate from Safe Streets.
Say the, I'm sorry, say the piece about LifeBridge again, because they're one of the organizations that's reached out to the council.
LifeBridge was funded by the federal government for a separate project, I believe around digital violence intervention, kind of in the innovation space. They are absolutely one of our site operators of six of our Safe Street sites. However, that CBI project was separate from the work of Safe Streets. So they have a separate contract for Safe Streets that's funded by state and city dollars.
Got it. Yeah, look, it's frustrating because when we have efforts that are clearly working in reducing violence, seeing those efforts get financially harmed or cut is extremely frustrating, especially when we're seeing community-based partnerships actually work. And so that's definitely one of the things that this council is very concerned about. I would appreciate, as a committee request, just to follow up on that. I do want the dollar amount. I want to.
I have that for you. I can definitely get that to you after this hearing.
That would be great if you could send it to this committee within 48 hours. I'd appreciate that. The other piece I want to ask about is victim services. I do have to give a shout out to my guy, Mark, over there, who does a great job supporting victims of violent crime. We've, I remember when I was in District One, no matter your race, your religion, where you're from, when we had someone die of homicide, quite often, Mark would show up and would bring support for families. We've had a number of conversations over the years about trying to consolidate victim services, right? The, at one point, the State's Attorney, head of Victim Services Fund, the Police Department, the Health Department had one, you had one, and I know there's been some effort by your office to consolidate. Could you talk about that effort? And could you talk about the financial need to support, to effectively support victim services? Because I know there's been times where if there's a family that can't afford burial or a funeral, we've stepped up and your office has stepped up and tried to get us there. And I think that's really important when someone loses a loved one, that they should at least have the dignity and respect to be able to bury their family member and send them away properly. So talk to us about that piece, what you've done in terms of victim services, and also what are the costs that we should be thinking about?
Thank you. So this year, we've, through our victim services team, not only have we served 316 victims so far this fiscal year to date, but we've removed 394 barriers. And our barriers range in type. This may be everything from providing transportation assistance to education, to employment, to vital records. Our victim services team does a great job of doing a comprehensive intake and assessment and figuring out for that individual, for that individual and their family, what's needed to get them to a place of safety and stability. So I'll definitely let Chief Mason talk a little bit more about that. I will just say that we've been able to leverage ARPA dollars, the dollars I mentioned from Department of Juvenile Services that helped supplement some of our relocation funds. We previously had funding from the Victim of Crime Act to support direct services for those victims that we work with. And so in that sense, we have been very reliant on grant funding for some of this or one-time funding sources. So in that sense, whenever we have funds that we're able to move directly to people who are needed, who need that support with education, who need that support with housing, we find a way to move it. And I think what I've found through our collaboration with the Police Department and State's Attorney's Office Victim Services units is that while they have criteria that relate directly to the way they handle cases, their investigatory and prosecutorial functions, our victim services team has been able to take and catch some of the people who may otherwise fall in the gap. And so we work very closely. We're doing intentional and comprehensive case reviews with our partners at State's Attorney's Office and BPD. I know you were here on the council when we presented some pretty horrible findings from a victim services assessment that showed there were not only major gaps in the victim services landscape, but there was little to no coordination across these units. And so I cannot overstate the importance of the fact that these teams are now meet on a regular basis, have been doing that for more than a year, probably close to two years now. And that is making a difference in helping us better serve the people that we're here to serve. But I would like to allow Mark to speak a little bit about some of the work that his team does in that space. And then if you'd like, I can speak a little more about the consolidation of victim services.
Thank you, Council President. And I also would like to acknowledge you for always advocating for victims the way that you have. We've been on a number of different calls trying to find ways to make sure that we get families supported. And I appreciate, you know, you always being there and supporting families in that way. Yes, I agree. I think that we could actually use more funding, obviously. You know, just since 2023, we actually supported the dollar amount of $74,000 towards funeral expenses. So when you think about, you know, that impact and actually being able to allow families to, you know, I guess, overcome one trauma that they've actually experienced is huge because they have so many other things that they have to actually overcome. So having that, you know, be able to be moved out of the way, that barrier moved out of the way allows for families to hopefully recover better. As Director Mavronis said, we are looking to coordinate better with BPD, Victim Services and State's Attorney's Office of Victim Services so we can kind of manage not only the oversight of supporting victims, but funding as well, right? You know, as Director Mavronis said, you know, they may have different criterias, but when we actually are in these bi-weekly case reviews, we're talking about the supports that, you know, we can collectively provide for these families. And I think that's important when you think about dollars. We actually successfully received a letter from the Governor's Office for voca funds, where we were actually just awarded. We haven't gotten a dollar amount, but in that, in that actually budget request, we requested for, I think, $200,000 to go towards client services, which will be used for funeral expenses, relocation, rental assistance. And even most importantly, as I was talking to Director Mavronis, is that, you know, thinking outside of the box of what a young person may need, you know, when you possibly could have maybe a 13-year-old that was actually shot outside riding her bike and, you know, being able to immediately relocate them, but also provide a number of different supports that kind of will kind of divert their trauma, more or less, right? You know, relocating them to an apartment complex that actually has a swimming pool and, you know, having us pay for swimming lessons, being able to send her to summer camp, two summers in a row. And right now, she's in the process of going into Bard as a ninth grader, right? And actually recovering from that trauma. So it's huge when you think about how we can allocate those dollars if we have more of them to be able to support in all different kinds of ways, not just, you know, the overall ways of, you know, rental supports and things like that, but funeral expenses and just thinking outside the box of how to help young people recover from trauma.
Yeah, no, look, I just, I'll jump in real quick. I appreciate that, Mark. And, you know, one thing that I've learned in studying and trying to understand trauma for the past couple of years is that hurt people hurt people. And when we see someone that just lost a sister, a brother, a son, a mother, a father, a daughter, that cycle of retaliation can be very swift when folks are in their moment of grief and anger and frustration. And so I think one of the things that is really important, you know, as we're thinking about this moment where the work that you all are doing is clearly showing an impact and unfortunately does not seem to be valued in the same way federally as I think it is here locally, that piece around supporting victims, I think is critically important because if we're going to truly disrupt those cycles of trauma and cycles of retaliation and violence and all the rest, being able to show up for someone in their worst moment, I think is so critically important. And even if it's relatively small, financially small things, it's big for that person at that time and it makes an impact and it can settle a incredibly tense, stressful situation. And so I just think for me, it is really important that we, that we, the general fund, the city, that we support that work. Director, you got anything else on that?
Just one last thing. I think to build on the last point that you mentioned, and I know I've had similar conversations with BPD, I know that their victim services team also heavily relies on the same grant that Chief Mason was talking about. And last year, we also put in our application, a request for some of those client, direct client service funds, and were not awarded. And so we're really hoping that we're going to be able to be awarded this year. But it is a concern of mine that the entirety of our victim services team, save our chief and deputy chief Lee, are on the Victim of Crime Act grant. And so with some of the signals that we're getting federally, that is a concern, and we do not want to see this team, which is working so hard for Baltimore in any way, be in jeopardy. We're really grateful that the Governor's Office has let us know that we will be awarded, but we have to see what the details look like and where that leaves our team. But I know in the meantime, we're super committed to continuing to do the work and be there for people in their time of need and fill in the gaps where we can with our partner agencies.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And I'll just say, you know, on behalf of the council, that we appreciate the work and that when it comes to supporting victims and disrupting those cycles of trauma, this council is all in. And we are going to continue to push to make sure you all are able to do that in partnership with all of our other law enforcement partners, as well as some of the great groups that I know you work with as well. So thank you, Director. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to really the whole Monsi team. Much appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Monsi. Director Mavronis, and the entire team for being here tonight and staying with us tonight. We are officially in recess.